You can't just be looking at me, that would be very, very boring.
Were you coming in at the last minute?
We have to, we have to make this entertaining.
Good evening.
My name is Anthony Morando, attorney of law for Cuddy Fair. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Gardens and Caravan Station. Our team is with us tonight, Luis Esposito, Barry Price, who's the owner representative. And our architects are here to see if they can introduce themselves in a few minutes, because they're going to present some materials. We're pretty excited to be here tonight to give you a presentation, which will stay within the 20-minute window. But mainly because we've been working really hard for a long time to get the environmental impact data for this project to move forward and then some point five soon. We've moved past the overall conceptual design layout, now we're getting into the degree of building placement, which involves some topographic constraints that we're dealing with. So we're going to narrow what we're talking about tonight really for a few things. One.
You can take it out and hold it until...
We're going to focus mainly on core area of the project. And that term has a meaning. As you know, this project is located on the eastern side of Route 17, down by the Harum Train Station. It's about 112 acres, not all of that's in, not all the area to the project is in the Village of Woodbury. The core area which we're going to talk about tonight is the half a mile radius that extends out from the train station into the project site. So the architects, Ron, will walk through each other. Some of the key aspects, if you recall, of this project based on zoning and comprehensive planning and the studies that were on for many years, was creating this core area to promote this as a sustainable mixed-use project by the train station. And the goal of the plans that were developed for this project is creating a critical mass by the core area so that we can transition to residential outlands, support some pressure development in that neighborhood area. So what we're going to talk a lot about tonight is heights of buildings. That's really the focus of it in relation to the layout of the buildings. Because what they're going to show you is that the constraints that are down by the train station are pretty meaningful. The concrete is pretty tough. So when we talk about heights in the core area, there is discretion with respect to heights that are limited. It's subject to the plan, which viewed in concert with the evaluations that we're going to do with people that are coming on. So what we wanted to do to help develop and finalize our studies is talk through with you some of the details and some of the project plans that we're really moving forward. Because as you can imagine, if we want to be working in concert with you, and if there's, you know, ideas or suggestions or problems with where we're going, it will affect our studies that are working with that design. So that's the intro to what we're going to be doing tonight. I'm going to hand it over to Ron, our architect, and have him walk through the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, guys. Ron, going to communicate with the reading room for the design. And we've been, our first task on this project was to really look at the massing of the building and how it works with its topography. As Anthony said, we're in the core area, almost exclusively. And if you start, you don't have x-ray vision, I know that.
Thank you.
If you look at the building, the site, we need to start to develop the massing. The first thing you'd be able to notice is that we have to connect to Route 17 to get to our new roads. And as you go from 17 down into our, will be our main street is, there's a changing gradient, like plus or minus 12 feet, almost a full story. So for building massing at Route 17, to feel right on 17, we come down to the right-of-way street, and we're probably a full-story higher, lower rather, than we are when we're on 17. So as we develop the plans and the massings, we've tried to keep the topography of the road similar to where it is now, and work the buildings around it so that we have a walkable pedestrian friendly downtown. And in doing that, you'll see that our great changes are 12 feet, 16 feet, 8 feet, 22 feet to get to the lower parts. So we've taken advantage of those drops in top apartment underneath, and kept the plazas on the main levels flat, so that it's really walkable. And I'll take you one more page. So for, when you come, when you enter, actually, look, we can come back one, you can see it here. When you enter this site from 17, you've got a two-story building, but you're driving down into this lower-level road, and you're presented with a building here that if we don't use this massing, you're looking at rooftop equipment, the first thing you see when you enter this site. So we've used that as our cue to set the building height throughout the rest of the set. And you'll see, that view you're looking at is literally the view coming down, this connecting road from 17, looking at this, at this building. We've masked the building so that street level is pedestrian-friendly from a scale standpoint, but the massing of the building is vehicular-friendly as you drive in, so that you're not looking at rooftop. So as I make this entrance and turn left, I'm looking at our new street where this building is the first one that you see from 17. It's two stories on that side, it's four stories here, or two stories on that side. And we've kept this plaza level flat the whole way, on both sides, as if front's the building, so that it's a pedestrian experience, not a vehicular experience. The road drops to follow the grade, and we're not fighting grade, bringing it onto the building, we're kind of, we're hemmed in on 17 between existing and the other buildings. So we can't really adjust the grade much the upper this. You're now looking back up from the low point, which is roughly 550, back up the hill, and we're faced with this vertical challenge at the face of the plaza. And that's housing parking, because as the building drops and wraps around, we're parking underneath these buildings behind it. Exactly, exactly. And I mean, you'll see it here, you'll see it right here. Right, so when you, as you come around, you're dropping down another 22 feet from here, and I'll show you in a second, one of those sections. But we're parking underneath these buildings to take advantage of that. What it does do is it gives us this tall wall to the side. The pedestrians are all on the top side of that wall. And what we're working through still is taking this hard wall and making it a soft wall. So we're going to step it, we're going to take advantage of the change to use an opportunity for stairs, so you can circulate down from the bottom. If you did park on the road and you wanted to come up here, you're not walking back up the hill, you're literally coming in through this corner, you can go there with a stair. You're connected to the parking as well. So if you found parking here, and want to come out and shop both sides, you can do that, because the whole thing is connected. And opening it, because right now, I think this is, it's not turf underneath, right? It's going to definitely park, it's multiple levels of parking here, I'll show you in this section. So you can see where the plaza is up here, we've topped underneath all this structure parking. And that structure parking, we're going to expose at this far side, but off-road softened, we've had state-inclined plants, probably some kind of screening. We've got net screens that, plant material being run in, and give an actual break between the two spaces, but it's still allowed, airing it out, lighting it out, and it'll make both, I think both sides feel better. It'll feel better from the street, but it'll also feel better in the garage, than not being, you know, very, this concrete garage. So... Sorry? This one? It's a sidewalk, this is a plaza, I mean, it's all down. This piece is a sidewalk, and we're going to open this entire piece, so it's a wrap-around sidewalk, and connecting to the garage. Yep. So you'll be able to get up and down from the garage to all levels, to public plaza or from the garage up into the residential component. And to an outdoor sidewalk, so if you wanted to walk, park and walk. We're trying to make this as pedestrian-friendly as we possibly can with the complexities of the topography. Yes, so our built environment will be 100% ADA compliant. The road network that's existing, sorry, the road network that's proposed, connected to the existing, might be a challenge for us to get to work completely for EDN in this configuration, but we can adjust that so that the ramps and slopes are more gentle than they are right now. This is literally from first pass at grade. So we have work to do to come back and make this a more complete for the overall design. But this is really our first pass at giving you a sense of what we think is appropriately massed for this site and this topography. Typically, the zoning is, you know, is envisioned on a flat, on a flat site, right? And this one's really far away from a flat site. So we're trying to work with it.
So we're not here asking for anything, other than we wanted to walk through this for this Andy this, because it's somewhat complex, and we wanted to be here to add any initial thoughts or questions you had. What we were hoping to do as an outgrowth of this meeting is, again, circle back as we have in the past over the last few months with your staff members to talk through some of this stuff. Make sure on the engineering side and the legal side that we're in a good position, we're kind of swimming in the same direction. And we also were wondering if we could coordinate with ESOs now, and the ability to form it to have a conversation about some of the questions we have, what they'd like to see as part of this, given all the topographic constraints. That's pretty much what we're working on, and the faster that we can get ourselves comfortable with some of those issues, we'll be able to, like I said, finish our studies and reports, and hopefully finish up the EXs quicker, if it's possible.
How steady you want the design right now before we send it over to all the ESOs?
Well, I guess I should let, yeah, Ron answer that.
From a massing standpoint or from the actual...
The actual layout, because there, if you think of the turn, turning radius, it is radius of access, and so, I just feel like we might have a little room here, and I don't want to...
There is, we're actually just looking forward to having those meetings, so we can make this site successful in that, in that way.
Part of the, part of the reason we're trying, we're trying to engage sooner on it is because we don't want to get to a point where it's hard to go backwards. And if there's something they can tell us now that's really meaningful and help drive this, we want to hear it. So we're not quite there.
Because they're going to ask you for turning radius and that too, or do you guys already have it prepared? It's in progress with our civil. I will tell you that, I think personally, that it's in a really good place to have conversation and work through these conditions. We can show you turns, we can show you truck turns and truck access to loading, which we will, but this is where, I think this is the moment where we'd love to get the feedback from them, that'll help us drive this in the right direction, as opposed to be getting a hard, hard building and then having guys in the back and say, "We..." No, I get that, and I understand, I just, I know when they, at least when Fire looks at it, they're going to look at it, they're going to want to see the turn radius as their first. Access is going to be their biggest concern. So they're going to want to see a set of plans, whether this is great to show them, they're going to want to say, "That's great," but I still need to be able to see if my rate can actually get there before I can give you any sort of feedback. So if you can provide that, and I know Natalie has a template for our tile out, which is going to be the cleanest with, and if the tile out, you can get everything else around it. So if you can get that from Natalie, and then work that into your sims, and then you can let, do the referral to ESOs for the initial turning radius movements and stuff like that, and then curfew.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Great.
And then, and then just from your own perspective, as you, as you look at this more closely, go forward, thoughts on the planning, thoughts on the massing, you know, we'd love to get your feedback as we're developing this.
You'll send a pitch out here?
No, we, we can submit that PDFs.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
You got it.
Send this tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I'll make, we'll have this refer to our ESOs in favor.
Thank you, guys. And it's terminated for comments. Sorry, it was a rough weekend, although we're...
It's cool, you should have seen me running around before, so. I was in rush shape, I was like...
Okay, next on the agenda, we're very kind, they drive, you switch the draft, part of the back statement, complete this...
Yeah. Sounds good.
Associated with both of the statements, including structural development, that's a part of the infill and structure of 159,000, 249 square meters additional retail spaces, property changes, 149.2 acres, as known on the living act of the map, that's section 225, block 1, block 70.23, and section 226, block 1, block 1. Properties are located in the LC and IP and LIO and HMO districts. Welcome.
I have this, I don't sound like this on, he's helping out.
Jennifer, you can use mine.
Hello?
Oh, you can use mine too.
I just want to give my court reporter this. We're all set, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Board, Jennifer Kanerek, from Price Mies Showman in Dearmania. On behalf of the applicant, CPG Partners LP, care of premium outlets, most commonly referred to as Simon. First, Mr. Chair, thank you for coming out to make this a quorum, we appreciate it. We did bring out quite a bit of people, so we wanted to make sure it was, you know, worth the effort to get everybody out. So as you mentioned, acting chair, we're here seeking amended site plan approval, SECR approval, and special permit for a proposed Phase 5 project that will include adding new stores and restaurants, a hotel, second parking garage, and storage while upgrading other property amenities. The board should have received a presentation package, not only this evening that was passed out, but also in advance of tonight's meeting. And on hand this evening, I have with me Mr. Timothy Fox, Vice President of Development, who will be handling the development of this Phase 5 project in Woodbury. As you might expect, Simon and its project team are very excited to present this proposed Phase 5 project to the board. I also have here with me this evening, other members of our team from Price Mies, from Simon and Langen Engineering, who prepared the DSEIS draft. We also understand that this evening, the board will be reviewing the DSEIS to determine completeness, and with respect to that, we have received several board professionals' reports, including your board attorney, board engineer, board traffic, as well as your environmental consultant. And I know that some of you on this board were not board members back in 2018, when we first submitted the application. So I just want to give a brief history, and I'll be quick, so I know that we're not going to chew up the 20 minutes for our presentation. So back in October of 2018, we, Simon submitted this application for Phase 5. We subsequently held a pre-application concept meeting, also in October of 2018. Then in December of 2018, the Village Planning Board declared its intent to serve as lead agency and classified it as a Type 1 action. Fast forward to May of 2019, we submitted our application for supplemental SECR review draft scoping document for the DSEIS. And also, May 2019, the Village Planning Board established itself as lead agency by a resolution, and adopted a positive deck requiring the preparation of the DSEIS for Phase 5. In May of 2019, the scoping document public hearing was held, and the next month, in June, it was adopted by the Village Planning Board. Finally, fast forward four years later, July of 2023, now that we've gone through the pandemic, we've been able to submit our amended site plan, SECR, and special permit application. And without further ado, I can bring Tim up to do his presentation, if that pleases the board.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, appreciate that. Thank you all for being here. Fox. F O X, yeah. I know, I'm lucky. Tim Fox, it probably doesn't get easier than that. So as Jen outlined, we've been at this for a while, I mean, since 2018, so we're excited to be here tonight. I'm going to try to go fast. You can refer to the package. So the, just a little bit of background on Simon, S&amp;P 100, we're one of two real estate companies in the S&amp;P 100, and we have 250 properties that we're a part of, 14 countries, 30 some-odd states. And I can safely say that this property down the road is in the top two to three properties that we own. It's really special, and I think you all probably know that, and there's a lot of care and a lot of attention and a lot of pressure that goes into these things, but we think we're going to, we're going to do something great here. So just moving on to page three of the package, just a really, really brief history. You know, the property opened in 1985 with the predecessor owner, which we acquired in 2004. There've been several different expansions, projects, we've invested, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars into the property, and we're interested in making additional investments. The most recent project occurred back in 2014 through 2018, which was the addition of Parking Deck A, Market Hall, and then the branding of the regions. So some really significant investments that we're proud of. Kind of moving along on page, on page four here, the property is a destination, and you know, I think when you come here, for those that don't have the opportunity to visit the property on a daily basis, it's amazing. I mean, you're driving through, you know, the Hudson Valley, and then all of a sudden there's 150 acres. It's a destination for employment, it's a destination for restaurants, retail, it's a, it's an international destination for shopping. I mean, 50% of the customers at Woodbury Common are tourists, a significant portion of which are international tourists. It's really well-known, this is the number-one location for many of the retailers. They're worldwide number-one location, right down the road. So just continuing along, you know, the mission of the project, you know, I think a lot of people may say, "Well, why are you doing this? This is a great property, what's the purpose?" And, you know, we're really trying to make something that's great, even better, bringing it to another level. You know, there's, there's, there's a, there's a great opportunity, we feel, to improve, and, you know, the new shops, the new restaurants, the hotel, which is an interesting and new component, we think could be complementary to, to the rest of the property. And it's a, it's a really significant economic opportunity for, you know, the state, the region, the village, the town, that, excuse me, we think is attractive. And, you know, that's, without further ado, I'm going to do my best here, I might need some help, but we have some renderings, they're in your package. All right, so this is the aerial rendering, and the new development areas in the foreground and the background. So this is the Niagara region, these buildings exist today, and this is the new proposed retail in this area, this is the new proposed storage area. And that constitutes 130,000 square feet of retail space, plus another roughly 22,500 square feet of tenant storage. And in the background, you'll notice, just beyond the Saratoga region, is where the hotel is located. That's a proposed for a 200-key hotel. And then on the north side of the site is where the Parking Deck B is proposed. So that's just over 3,000 parking spaces.
There's two to the left, right?
Yes. The next page of your package just talks about some of the specifics which I just mentioned. So it's the proposal for the retail and restaurant, the infill retail, the hotel, the parking deck, the tenant storage. We're also proposing some enhanced amenities and sustainability initiatives, and including with the amenities, we're really focusing the design catering to the pedestrian. And in doing so, it's a focus on safety, it's consolidating a lot of some of the existing surface parking in the Niagara region to the parking deck. We'll be improving the landscaping, new and improved landscaping, a children's play area, so we're going to be touching a lot of different parts in this project. Okay. There's, the proposal is all within the existing footprint of the property. If you go to the next page, and I'm not sure if we have this, it's a comparison, and it shows the existing properties, this is page eight of the, of your package. The existing site plan is on the left with the proposed site plan on the right, the new areas are highlighted in yellow. So you'll, you'll note, there's kind of three nodes, there's the retail and storage node, which is on the left side of the plan, that's the Niagara district. And then on the right side of the proposed site plan is, is where the hotel is located, and then on the upper right is the parking deck. In Jen's presentations, she had mentioned that, you know, the first submission was actually made several years ago, and in time, we've made some modifications. Those are highlighted on page nine of the package. So the former site plan on the left and the new site plan on the right. The changes you'll note, so there's kind of three key focus areas, which I just mentioned, there's the retail, the hotel, and the parking. And this, this plan, the new plan, we've kind of consolidated some of the newer elements into those nodes. And so we've eliminated, on the north side of the former plan, there were two hotels proposed, as well as a couple outlots, those are no longer part of the proposal. And then on, on the south side, where the hotel is on the new plan, there had been an expansion of the existing parking deck, that's no longer part of the proposal. So there's just one parking deck that would exist at the north side of the site. And in the Niagara district, it's somewhat similar concept, however, there was surface parking that existed on the interior, that's no longer part of our plan. There's some minor parking, but the idea is, is that, you know, that, that parking would be consolidated to the parking structures, and it helps to eliminate some of those conflicts between the pedestrian and the vehicles, which we're trying to avoid. So just moving on, and we can go back to the first. So a little closer view of the Niagara district, which includes the new retail and the storage. Again, this is about 133,000 square feet, 132,000 square feet of retail space, and on the interior of that is, the storage component would be proposed. And that storage component has seen considerable demand from our tenant merchants, that, you know, they have a lot of merchandise that moves in and out of the space, and frankly, they don't have enough places to put it. And so this is, this is something that's kind of a little bit new and different from the previous proposal, but we think it makes good use of the space.
The storage units, individual beds for each, each tower house, right?
It will, it will, we haven't designed the, the storage itself, I mean, it will be driven largely by demand, but in a lot of cases, there are, you know, there are individual units for, for, you know, retailers that might need space for inventory and so forth. and so forth. And then we have this one. So, the next image that Fred is pulling up is actually going to be of you looking this way. So, this is the existing location, Shake Shack. So, this is a rendering of the new proposed retail. And you are looking across, if you were at the property, the Parm Restaurant would be behind you, and you're looking towards Shake Shack. So, the buildings on the right exist, and the buildings on the left and at the end of this walk area, those are new. So, that is the retail component of the proposal. The next part of the proposal is, I'm on page 12 of the presentation, is the hotel, which is a new element for us. We think that it could be, it'll add a lot of life. We had previously proposed two hotels, we've kind of consolidated them, so we've reduced the room total. In the old proposal, there were 240 rooms, and the new, there's just one 200-key. And, you know, the idea is, is that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, tourist traffic, as I mentioned, and guests that, you know, are coming, but we think that there's a lot of demand for those folks to be staying on property. There's also a significant economic benefit to the hotel that I'll talk about in just a minute. So, this is the hotel rendering, it can be found on page 13 of your packet. And the idea is, is that, you know, the design is complementary to the existing and the new elements, keeping with those themes. I'm not an architect, and so I don't, please, we have professionals that handle that, I'm merely a spokesperson. But we think that that will add an interesting component to the property and something we're excited about. Another perhaps less exciting component to the project is the parking deck. And this is a significant deck, it's over 3,000 spaces. Again, as I said, the idea is to consolidate some of the existing surface parking to the parking structures. It's a net increase of just over 1,400 parking spaces. And the ratio, the retail ratio of parking would remain the same, and there would be a portion of the parking which would be specifically dedicated to the hotel use, which we've identified here in these figures. And then in... The existing property is 912,000 square feet, that's the approved leasable area. So, the proposal is for an additional 155,000 square feet. Yeah, there's a net increase of, in fact, if you go to the very last page of this packet that outlines the, all of the figures. So, the existing, there's a column for the existing, the former submission and the current submission. So, that provides all of the specific data. And what you'll find is that the proposed plan relative to the submission in 2019, yeah, we've reduced the square footage by about 40,000 square feet, we've reduced the hotel key count by 40 keys, and we've reduced the total parking by 700 spaces. So, that's kind of the... In your proposed gross space pool... Yes. I know you guys have been in front of this board several times, kiosks are used, are you know, all included in there? We're not going to be looking for additional? It's all included, and you'll notice at the earlier part of my presentation, and it can be found on, bear with me for a second, page seven, it outlines the specific figures for the square footage. So, in that Niagara district, the area that we have identified is the 132,299. And then there's also the 22,950 square feet of infill. So, that would be infill where, you know, over the course of time, I think as you've alluded to, there have been some, you know... Yeah, so that would be, in the event, for instance, we've had expansions of coach or polo where, you know, they exist, but they need more space here and there, that's what that space would be allocated to. So, despite the fact that the parking garage might not be the most exciting element, there is a really nice rendering that's included in your packet, it's on page 15. And you'll find that the, as I said, it's a complementary design, it's very similar to the existing parking deck, which is one of the nicest decks, I think, that exists. So, that's, those are elements of the project that we're still studying. You know, the rooftop solar, one of the challenges that comes with that is the height limitation. So, right now, we're beneath the height requirement. So, if we incorporated it, that may change things. It is something we're studying. Same with the helipad. You know, we've had a consultant come out, they've provided some professional feedback. We're really in the preliminary stages, but we do think that that will be part of the proposal, yes. Yes. And I know we have, you know, significant charging stations elsewhere in the property, but that would be incorporated into the design, yeah. So, page 16 talks about some of these additional site benefits and amenities. I'll let you go through that, and, you know, we're kind of going beyond our time, so I want to move along in the interest of everyone's time. And as I mentioned, you know, this is a significant destination of employment, I mean, it's an economic engine. This project would constitute more than $20 million in annual incremental tax revenue. And that's a number that includes non-property tax, real property tax, sales tax, and then the hotel sales and occupancy. And I can give you those figures if you want specifically, but, you know, needless to say, I mean, this is a major contributor, and this project would constitute another $20 million in incremental tax revenue. So, significant addition there. And in addition to the economic tax revenue, job creation, you know, 3,000 jobs created as a result of this project, 2,000 in the direct and indirect construction, and then another 770 full-time and part-time site jobs at the property. The construction would generate approximately 250 million for the local state economies. So, it's a serious investment. And it's a big project, I'm on page 19. This is a multi-year project, I mean, we have the operating property, which is our number-one priority. And so, we'll be, our intention would be to build the project in phases, where the parking deck would be executed in an initial phase. That would be followed with perhaps some overlap with some of portions of the retail, and then following that would be the hotel component. This is a multi-years process that, we've provided some durations on page 19 that, you know, speak to some of those potential timelines. Do you say that we'd walk that first, walking 18 miles after that, the retail would have to be... Yeah, I think there would likely, there would be overlap of those two. And, you know, that's something that we are studying is, you know, how we'll execute the project in, you know, the most efficient manner possible and... Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, that's the presentation. We'll welcome, you know, any questions or comments, and I understand it's a lot to take in, we really appreciate your time tonight.
So, I'm just going to start with just a brief summary for the board as to why we're here tonight. More than just to give a presentation, this is really on the agenda to determine whether or not the DEIS is adequate for public review. A lot of people call that completeness. I prefer to call it adequate for public review because completeness gives the impression that it's complete, all of the studies are done, et cetera. But that's not why we're here. So, it's a pretty low bar to reach to determine that it's adequate for public review. Basically, if there's a topic in the scope that needed to be touched on that you specifically identified, it needs to be touched on in the EIS, and then it can be put out to the public so that you can get comments from all of the other interested and involved agencies, members of the public, for really for the substantive comments, which would then be identified by the stenographer. The applicant would have to go back and respond, and the FEIS to all of those comments in writing, the substantive comments that are received. So, the reason we're here tonight is to determine whether or not the matter is adequate for public review. And I think you have comments from all of the board's consultants, but since I have the mic, I'm just going to go first. I gave the board and the applicant a copy of my comments, so I'm not going to go through them individually. I just wanted to note that I had some general comments on each of the areas that are listed. And one more main comment for purposes of the executive summary, which is usually where a lot of the members of the public, you know, it's a long document, right? So, they look at the executive summary, they look to get the highlights, find out what are the impacts, what are the mitigations, et cetera. And it needs to be written in a tone that is very easy for the public to understand because you don't want a lot of the technical jargon in there. I found the executive summary here to be a little bit tough for what I thought the public would be interested in, continue reading, and understand. So, that was one of the things I put in my memo that I think that the applicant could focus on to make that a little bit clearer. That's not a, necessarily a completeness comment, it's more of a substantive comment, but for purposes of they're going to resubmit it to you, I thought that when the public takes its initial view at it, they're going to want to be able to know what they're reading. So, I won't bore you with the rest of my memo, and I was quick on that one. I'll turn it over to Natalie. All right, brevity isn't my strong suit, but I'm going to try really hard here. All right. Again, my comments were distributed to the applicant as well as to the board, so I'll just try to be brief. You know, and I think Kelly did a good job sort of describing why we were here. You know, our comments aren't technical in nature at this point, it's really just a hard look at, you know, was what was required by the scope addressed in the DSEIS? So, in our opinion, the DSEIS is incomplete at this time, based on the comments that we had. One of the things that I thought high-level needed to be noted, and kind of how we structured our memo, is there are several comments that are indicated in bold text where the scoping document had required a certain review of elements of the project that I had assumed were no longer proposed because it was silent in the text of the DSEIS. It was silent in the document, the DSEIS document. So, for instance, the solar panels that were proposed, the expansion of the parking deck, the helipad, those items, there were a lot of areas of the scoping document that required discussion on those. And based on Tim's presentation, it sounds like they may still be proposed. So, if they are proposed, are going to be considered as part of this project, they need to be studied as part of the DSEIS, and/or our comments had suggested that, at a minimum, the DSEIS should identify those and basically say that they're no longer proposed and not going to be studied as part of this review. We had comments on the executive summary, the description of the proposed action, our comments on geology, soils, topography, and slope. I just wanted to note that the applicant discusses soil borings that were conducted in 2008 and 2011. A map should be provided where those borings were conducted, along with the results in an appendix. Hopefully, those borings are in areas where the proposed development and these large buildings and structures are proposed. You know, otherwise, we may recommend that additional borings be taken. Dust control is an important consideration for this site. I understand that that was a historical issue, you know, during construction, so we've asked for additional mitigation measures to be discussed in the DEIS. We had comments on water resources. The village adopted the Water Quality Protection Overlay District, so that should be discussed in the DEIS or DSEIS. You know, again, just in relation to zoning and also regulatory requirements at a local level. The DSEIS discusses water quality standards and thresholds. We're recommending that sampling be taken to confirm the status of the water bodies at this time. There are modifications to outlet control structures at each of the ponds associated with the existing detention facilities. Those construction impacts, so those water bodies should be discussed as part of the DSEIS. We had comments on drainage and stormwater, the village's MS4 requirements are required to be discussed. We recommend an inspection and report on the status of those facilities, the existing stormwater management facilities be provided. We had comments on noise, air quality, land use and zoning. Specifically with land use and zoning, there should be a discussion on landscaping and lighting and their compliance associated with the same. The variance that is currently identified in the DEIS is associated with the height of the parking garage. The DSEIS doesn't discuss the degree of the variance that's needed, so additional information should be provided. We had comments on visual resources, cultural resources, and utilities. Obviously, a big issue right now for the village is the moratorium on water supplies, so additional information should be provided on the, by the applicant on the availability of resources for the village to support this project. That's also for sewer as well as water. We had comments on community facilities, public safety and services. Specifically, the scope requires that the DSEIS discuss municipal facilities, including but not limited to village and town hall services, the police, fire, emergency services, hospital facilities, et cetera. Right now, the DSEIS only discusses the amenities that Woodbury Common is proposing to offer, so those specific services should be described and discussed. We had comments on the socioeconomic and fiscal conditions. One big comment here, I think, is that the DSEIS discusses the possibility of a pilot program here, so that's payment in lieu of taxes. So, I think that really needs to be brought forth and discussed in more detail as far as the benefits and the drawbacks for the village and the applicant as part of this study. I don't think that's something that's come up before and/or maybe as part of developing the scoping document, the applicant represented that that wouldn't be requested here. We had comments on construction effects, sequencing and phasing, alternatives. Again, going back to how the scope has changed since the initial inception, four or five years ago, the alternatives that were considered under the scope included, you know, no helipad or one hotel instead of two hotels. So, now, with the way the DSEIS is prepared, it is, there is no longer a helipad proposed, and only one hotel is there. So, something as far as alternatives needs to be discussed, as far as a reduced-scale alternative. You know, so we had suggested maybe no hotels, or no parking garage, or even, I think, at one time during the scoping process, there was consideration of a railroad stop at this site. So, the applicant needs to develop that section more. We also had comments on projected impacts on energy use and solid waste management. And as far as the appendices are concerned, I won't go through everything, but the GLA tabulation existing and proposed should be provided as well. That's it. Well, it's not, but it's all I'm going to talk about, you know.
Okay. We have some... I'm going to stand so you can actually see me. So, we had several comments on traffic. I think our conclusion is that, you know, the document's not yet complete as well. You know, there's, just to highlight some of the things that we discussed in our letter, you know, we wanted to see some more information on Sunday traffic, just because we know that the Sunday afternoons can kind of be a peaking time for the facility. We had some questions about the actual traffic volumes that were used, you know, there's a lot of reliance on some historical data, which makes a lot of sense, but obviously things have changed with what's out there, and we want to see some more information on the comparison of those historical volumes to what the 2023 volumes show, especially at the main access points into and out of the commons. You know, one of the things we did look at pretty closely was the trip generation. It actually, when we take a look at the volume figures, it actually looks like there's a reduction in trip generation, especially on a Saturday, which doesn't really make a lot of sense to us, so we want to just take another look at that and make sure that those numbers on the figures at least are correct, and then how that changes the analysis. There were a couple developments outside of this that were accounted for in the traffic analysis. Gardens at Harriman being one, Shops at Woodbury being one. We noted that there's some other things that have changed since the scope was originally written. For instance, the two Turner Road Hotels I know are proposed, so maybe those need to be considered in here. And if there's any other projects that... need to be considered in here, and if there's any other projects that, that we're aware of, that should be included. We wanna take another look at, at the distributions of arrival and departure traffic for the facility, really based on what's happening now with the changes that have been done on 32 by DOT. The, the arrival and departure distributions that are in the study are, I think, really based on the prior analysis from Grove-Slade study from 2012, so we wanna just make sure that nothing's really changed in where people are going to and from, maybe there's more people using the, the Nininga Road roundabout entrance than there were previously, and see how that change, may, may change some things. We had some other comments on, on internal, like more kind of site circulation related things, sightlines, and some of the new access location, or internal driveway locations at the, at the hotel, at the, the new parking garage. The, wanted to see, you know, maybe there's a need for some other internal control, traffic control, whether maybe there's a location for an internal roundabout, or internal traffic signal depending on what the volumes might be. And then some of the other ones are more kind of detailed as you get into, you know, looking at pedestrian flows and things like that, especially maybe around like the bus stop location that's near the parking, the new parking garage. And lastly, I think, I think some of the information was actually in the presentation tonight, but we wanted to see a really clear description of, of the number of parking spaces that we're losing, the number of parking spaces that are proposed, make sure that that's clear in, in the study. And sorry, one, one last thing, and I think we touched on it a little bit, was just the phasing of construction is, is really important here, and you're gonna be losing parking spaces and doing some other construction at the same time, so that, that's something that we're gonna have to look at closely as we, as we move forward.
Does he also say buses, their access to parking spaces, it's charged, and access to...
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think that was kind of my comment about the, the circulation near that, the bus stop that's there today, and, and how that operates and how that's, you know, with the change...
How does that...
Yeah.
So you also have an environmental consultant, Capital Environmental Consultants. I know that I sent the board their memo, or they sent the board their memo, and I passed that along to the applicant as well, that contains conditions, that contains comments on the ecology section, and, and I apologize, I know I told everybody to be very brief, but everybody's been talking so fast, I feel like it's my fault, sorry guys. With all of these comments, and obviously any more from the board, I think it's clear that the consultants don't think that this, right now, is adequate for public review. So after you go over any other comments, I think it would be appropriate to make a motion to deem the DSEIS at this time to be incomplete, and you've given the applicant plenty of marching orders to go on and get your new ones. But if the board has any further comments, please.
Hey, then I will make motions, the, the DEIS, the IIS, this one. As Chris likes to say, you have your homework.
I was just gonna say that, you took that out of my mouth, I was just gonna say that, we have a lot of homework to do. All right, thank you very much, Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, appreciate it, have a great evening.